And welcome to the July meeting of the Borough Council, the Borough of Gettysburg. If you all please stand for a moment of silence and the Pledge of Leigis, please. Clutch?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening. A few announcements. An executive session of the Borough Council, the Borough of Gettysburg, will be conducted immediately following the adjournment of this evening's monthly general business meeting of the council, consistent with Section 708A4 and Section 708A5, the Sunshine Act, for the following purposes. One, to consult with its manager, lane director slash zoning officer, and solicitor regarding information or strategy in connection with issues on which identifiable complaints and/or appeals are expected to be filed. And two, to review and discuss matters of business which, if conducted in public, would violate a lawful privilege or lead to the disclosure of information or matters of confidentiality protected by law. All right, so first we have our motion to approve the July 10, 2023, agenda as presented.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion, second. Any questions or comments about the agenda? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, next to the minutes of both the meeting on June 12 and the work session on June 26. Before we have the motions, are there any known corrections to those minutes? Either the June 12 council business meeting or the June 26 work session? All right, seeing none, if we can have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
And is there a second?
Second.
All right, you have a motion and second. Any questions or comments about the minutes? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that takes us to public comment. Our first public comment session is restricted to those items that are on the agenda this evening. If you please use the podium, appreciate that, give your name, address, and please limit yourself to five minutes. Thank you. Yes, public comment.
Good evening. I'd like to, my name's Scott English, business owner, The Gettysburg Academy, 6668 West High Street, and I'd like to thank you all for the service and the time you all invest because it's a thankless job that you all do to keep the borough directed in the right direction. I'd like to thank the borough staff too, for everything that they do. I'm here to talk about the parking situation and the proposed pilot program, which I think is an awesome idea that Mr. Gable's come up with, and I applaud Mr. Gable and his parking folks as far as coming up with that idea. But I think, I'd like to just add one little thing, I think, to tweak it a little bit. If it is going to be a pilot program, why not test another addition to that, especially if the intent and the priority of parking in the borough is to promote and maintain traffic and pedestrian safety, if that's the number one goal. I really think that, you know, as you walk around the borough and enjoy the square, the number one thing that slows traffic down is pedestrians. Short of building little bridges across York, Carlisle, Chambersburg, and Baltimore Street, I don't know what the solution to that is, but we're an awesome small town, you need to keep pedestrians, and that's what brings, drives the economic engine here at the borough, most of it. I think that, right now, buses and large capacity vans for short-term use only, and the unloading and loading of passengers for visitation at historic sites, museums, cultural centers, theaters, and tourist attractions, I think that's the priority of the temporary reserve parking passenger program. I think if we added restaurants over 400 in capacity, because I've witnessed personally down in front of a restaurant on York Street, buses that are, which legally allowed to park or to unload and load passengers temporarily by sitting in York Street, that's one of the most unsafe situations I can even imagine. And I understand the pilot of maybe pushing them down a block to in front of St. James, I think that's, but then again, you have all the folks, pedestrians, then walking again on the streets, especially if they're coming to school, kids from Indiana or other areas. I really think if you did add restaurants over 400, you wouldn't have every brick and mortar in the borough applying to purchase those spaces on a temporary basis, and if those property owners would be willing to pay the full freight for those parking spaces for the desired time, I think that's a win-win for the borough. Thank you.
All right, public comments. Yep, find your way to the podium, please.
Brian Hodges at 137 Ridge Avenue. First, I'm glad we've survived Bike Weekend, I like to say that first. I'm also here to talk about the pilot program, a lot of what Mr. English said. I think it's a great start to alleviating the bus large-capacity program traffic flow into the downtown area, and also the safety of loading and unloading passengers. I believe, as it's written right now, there's going to be two spots down on York Street, two on Carlisle, and two in what you call the dead zone of Baltimore Street, I believe. And I emailed Mr. Gable, and he said Ms. Fissell, the parking manager, will be picking the exact spots where the buses will be able to park and change out the meters. My question would be, or my idea is, just hopefully, those spots that are chosen, which are low rented meters, are not in front of other businesses that don't partake in bus business, so there are businesses in each direction, so that'll be first. Mr. English also said that ordinance, as it currently states, which is loading and unloading of passengers for visitation at historic sites, museums, cultural centers, theaters, and tourist attractions, and I agree, since this is a pilot program, we're trying something out, that possibly it could be large-capacity restaurants and/or retail shops. Restaurants, 400, 450 seats or more, retail shops are large enough to handle a busload of people. I think that'd be safer, then buses may not go to the designated spot to unload. How do we tell them? Drive down two blocks, that's where you're going to be loading and unloading. Bus will probably still stop in Lincoln Square or right in the center of the street, unload, then drive down to the parking spot. I know that's probably the unsafest situation. And I'm not saying all brick and mortar restaurants or retail shops either. The large-capacity ones that are currently dealing with bus business or want to in the future, I'd rather keep the business in the borough than going to outside spaces where they also track buses down on Baltimore Street, farther down, out by the old barn, or they're going to call it. I'd rather keep it downtown and keep the money here. So just, I just ask, consider that as part of the pilot program, and that'd be really it, okay? Thank you so much.
All right, public comment.
Hello, I'm Carl Peterszak, I'm president of Destination Gettysburg, and I'm also here to provide some comments on the parking program that you're considering, and I first want to thank and commend the council for considering this program because I believe it's much needed. At Destination Gettysburg, we work with bus groups every day and help answer their questions and direct them on where to go for the tours, or what's really, since COVID, become a big issue, is also dining. So I would encourage restaurants to be included in this pilot program as well. In terms of capacity, I know we have some large restaurants with the 400-plus capacity, but I don't know that we need to go that high. I think there's restaurants of smaller capacity too that can serve bus groups and be considered as well. A little background on the bus business that we get here in Gettysburg. Pre-COVID, Destination Gettysburg estimated that we would get between 10,000 and 12,000 bus groups a year to Gettysburg. Now, that obviously was curtailed during COVID, and has been one of the slowest segments to come back. Leisure travel has come back very strongly, meetings and conferences has come back fairly strongly as well. Bus groups, not quite as much until this year. We estimate about 80% of the pre-COVID bus groups are returning to Gettysburg, and you can see that anecdotally, just going around town and seeing all the buses that are here. But we also get data from the visitor center and from some of our partners in terms of the numbers they're seeing compared to what they had pre-COVID. So I would say dining is probably the number one challenge for bus groups coming to Gettysburg, especially with Pickett's, General Pickett's buffet closing this year, with the Barn Resort not being open to take that business in, which was the plan. Under Saberhood opened this year, but after really the student bus season ended, so they may provide an outlet for next year. But just wanted to provide our comments and that background information to say I think this is a very important program, so I encourage you to please see through with it. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Bob Wiener. I live out 35 North Hay, west of town. I'm here to speak about the Resource Alley proposal that's out there. From what I've read in the paper this past week, they're talking about the funnel, and in my opinion, I don't think that's the way to go. I don't know what's broke, that we're considering that, because as long as I've lived here, I've used Resource Alley two or three times a day, and there's really, as far as I'm concerned, no problem there. There could be a safety issue, people that are walking there. There are streets, you know, all the streets have walks on them, they can use that. If they're using the bicycle path, you can go there. I don't see a reason to change what we already have there, simply because of wanting to do something different. It works, it's been working that way as long as I've lived here. If we take, there's approximately 100 cars, as I counted on my way through there this evening, that have to go out Franklin Street. That means that the light at Franklin Street is going to go off a heck of a lot more than what it ever has in the past. That means it slows up the traffic that goes through Chambersburg Street, and I think you're going to have a major backup on Chambersburg Street and out Beaufort Avenue. If you go with the proposal as it is, that means, from my understanding, the bikers also are going to have to go out Franklin Street. If I was riding a bike, I don't want to go on Franklin Street, I want to go straight through to get through town. But I would hope to consider that you would consider this leaving it as is. If you want to do beautifications, I'm all for it, go for it. But the two-way traffic, I think that's the way, we need to keep it. Thank you.
Public comment. All right, not seeing any additional. Go on to our Department of Planning, Zoning, and Code Enforcement, Ms. Marshall.
I have no motions on your agenda this month, but I do have some updates. The planning commission met on June 20 to provide recommendations to the zoning hearing board for the special exception variance application for the Gettysburg station site. Their next meeting is July 7, yes, Monday, July 17 at 7:00. We do have two subdivision and land development plans that have been submitted. One for Zero Hanover Street, proposed development of 28 livework townhouse units. One for 687 York Street, proposed minor subdivision plan involving the KNW Tyrenschmuck Lumber properties. So those will be discussed at that meeting, as will the character areas map, draft character areas map for the rezoning effort, which is not the draft zoning map, but it will very, it's sort of the transition into zoning. So anybody interested in providing comment or discussing either of those, that meeting will be the 17th at 7:00. We also had a zoning hearing on June 28, which was extended, it went until 10:00 and was adjourned, and will reconvene this Wednesday, the 12th, at 7:00 in this room to further discuss the Gettysburg station, special exception and variance applications. Are there any questions on my report this month?
Questions for Ms. Marshall.
Yeah, in your report, one of the proposed developments is listed at Zero Hanover Street, is that correct?
Yeah, it hasn't been addressed yet. It's the vacant lot next to the sewage treatment plant.
Oh, okay, great.
Any other questions for Ms. Marshall? All right, seeing none, we'll go on to historic environmental preservation. Ms. English.
Thank you. I have two items on the agenda for council vote, one being the recycling grant that we just received, and it's from the Recycling Development Implementation Grant under Section 902 of the municipal waste planning. We applied for $340,000 and were received the grant in the amount of $306,000, and that's for a leaf truck for Robbie's department, and I applied for some recycling totes for the public, and some lettering that the borough owns those totes. So we will have those available, hopefully maybe towards the end of the summer, if anyone would need those. We also were invited to the Farm Market for the Homestead and Green Living Expo. They purchased eight rain barrels, and we're going to be raffling them off, so if you stop by my booth and you answer questions about MS4, you'll get a raffle ticket, and we're going to give eight away, so a couple at 10:00, 11:00, and 12:00. You must be present to win, and if you mention you watch this on the Borough Council advertisement, we'll give you a raffle ticket. So brush up on your MS4, we have a lot of information on the website, so you can click on there, there's a couple of videos and some other information there. So if you answer the questions somewhat correctly or close, I will give you a ticket, and that's all I have.
Okay, does anyone have any questions that are not related to the two motions? First, from Ms. English. All right, so let's start with the Harb motion, please.
I make a motion to accept the recommendation of the Borough of Gettysburg Historical Architectural Review Board, Harb, following its review on June 21, 2023, and grant a certificate of appropriateness for the following application as presented. COA-230038, Critical Project, 340 Baltimore Street, the Brown House. Borough of Gettysburg to approve the demolition of the structure and the concept design for new construction of a building that would benefit the public, and that the demolition would occur only when a permit for new construction is ready to commence, per the application dated March 8, 2023.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and second. Questions and comments about the Harb motion for 340 Baltimore Street? All right, I think this is a process that's been coming, basically, since the time that it was privately owned and offered to, the private owner offered to construct a similar structure, and it was slow walkthrough process, and so then the government had to take over, and now here we are. So hopefully, those taxpayer dollars will be well spent. All right, any other questions or comments?
I had a, I just wanted to ask the question about when the Brown House was built. What was the date on that?
I'd have to check the file.
About 1890.
About 1890. This is when I remember going in there, and I have pictures somewhere deep back, with Mr. Lawver and I were in at the same time, with how far things are out of level, and I know that you're aware, I think there was at least one fire in that one structure.
Sorry, did you say that, did you speak up to some?
Yeah, just how, we, John and I were in that house together. This is a number of years ago, probably about the time the borough acquired it. I think it was certainly.
From prior perspective?
Certainly before COVID. Well, there was a, there was a fire in it at one time, quite a long time ago, but the other thing was just that, it's just so out of level and plumb and square in every way. The structure itself, and I think there was an estimate done, I think when Mr. Shields had it, there was an estimate done to fix that structure, and it was somewhere north of a million dollars, I think, to really do it correctly. It was some egregious figure, and it's because you basically would have to build a house within the existing house and dismantle the other one because it's just that far gone. It just was allowed to kind of deteriorate from the inside, such that the window sashes had been corrected with huge wedges to make them, you know, such that they can be sealed. And I remember taking my six-foot level in there, and we were out four or five inches. It was not, you know, anything slight, it was very significant.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, please.
Harb did not take this decision lightly. You could tell that they mulled it over, they thought about it carefully, about the historic nature of the house, and, but came to the agreement that this was the best way to go. And I trust, I trust their attitude, and I trust their thoroughness.
Yeah, and I don't mean to imply that, you know, when we started looking at this many years ago, that this was necessarily a snap decision either, it was just so clear that in order to make corrections, it was going to be very difficult to do, even if it could be done. And it was obvious that private owners, numerous private owners, had not been able to deal with those issues, because it's just completely financially prohibitive from doing so.
Hasn't it sat, hasn't it sat empty for a while?
I think it was empty at least since Mr. Schultz owned it.
I think before that.
I think you're right. I mean, it appeared, it appeared as if it had been empty for quite a long time, but I know that, you know, one time, I think he had some, he has a caterer's license, he was doing some, you know, like outside service in the yard in the back, but I don't think he ever used the structure, and that's a long time ago now.
I could be wrong, I'm wrong every now and then. I believe we got, the borough received some grant money for this project, thanks to the Main Street Gettysburg, I'd like to say that, for their, for the help with all of that, and our staff, of course.
Both of our senators and our congressmen support this program as well. Yes, they do.
All right, any further questions or comments? All right, if not, probably should have a roll call on this one, sir, I guess. Just the implication of a demolition severe.
Mr. Berger?
Aye.
Mrs. Butterfield?
Aye.
Mr. Carr?
Aye.
Ms. Lawson?
Aye.
Mr. Lawver?
Aye.
Mr. Moon?
Aye.
Mr. Heiser?
Aye.
All approved.
All right, and our next motion deals with the Recycling Development and Implementation Grant. So we can make that, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution to authorize the acceptance, on behalf of the Borough of Gettysburg, of a recycling development and implementation grant, recycling program grant number 202210275379, in the amount of $306,895, as approved by the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, DEP.
Thank you.
Under Section 902 of the Municipal Waste Planning, Recycling, and Waste Reduction Act, for the development and implementation of the borough's proposed recycling grant leaf vac and recycling bins project, and to authorize Charles R. Gable, MPA Borough Manager, to notify the Department of Environmental Protection of the borough's acceptance of the grant, and to provide all required information and documentation to the Department of the Preparation of the Award Agreement for the project, and to further authorize Mr. Gable and/or Sarah L. Stull, Assistant Borough Manager/Secretary, to sign, attest, execute, and deliver to the department the finalized award agreement and all other agreements and related documentation on behalf of the borough.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Yep, Ms. Lawson with a second. Questions or comments related to the grant acceptance? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that takes us, any further questions for Ms. English? Takes us down to parking. Ms. Fissell.
Good evening, you all have my report. I did change the report up a little bit this month, so if there's anything you don't understand or you need anything added, I can fix that if you have any, if you just let me know. The LPPs have gone down a little bit, that generally happens in the summer, but however, the reserved spaces in the parking garage have gone up. That's all I have out of the motion.
All right, any questions for Ms. Fissell this evening that are not related to the motion at hand? All right, seeing none, we have the motion for the pilot program, please.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 15, Part 1, Section 105 of the Code of Ordinances of the Borough of Gettysburg, in order to authorize borough's implementation of a 90-day oversized vehicle parking pilot program.
Second. All right, we have a motion and second. Are there questions or comments related to the motion?
So I just have a comment that, based on public comment this evening, this pilot program is pointing to an existing ordinance. The pilot program itself is a pilot program in itself, therefore, we can do what we want with it. Am I not correct on that? It's a pilot program for 90 days for oversized vehicle parking. I don't care what business wants it. That's the point of the pilot program. That's my comment and a question at the same time, but I think I've said my, what I needed to say, to make it very clear to council and public.
Yeah, I think the details, what you're discussing, are contained within the resolution itself.
Yep.
So that's, if you're looking for the detailed portion of...
I don't care the size of the business, I don't care the size of the restaurant, it's for everybody, it's a pilot program.
Okay, other questions or comments? It was mentioned in public comment, Mr. Hodges mentioned about other locations and impacts upon those. I would mention, I'd mention it in private, I would mention in public, that the St. James Church has their daycare, and it would be detrimental. Those first few spots there, maybe three or four, are pretty used between probably 6:30 and 9:00 a.m. each day. So if you could have it down the block a little bit further, I think that would be wise. I will be voting against this, simply because I think that, when I look at the situation, I've been on this board for a number of years now, and some people will do more or less whatever it takes to try to get their way, and, you know, the borough was very careful in how it designed its parking ordinance. If the problems that are occurring now were desired to be avoided, I think they could be avoided. When people deal with bus operators, if they told them to go down the street and find someplace safer to unload, they could do so. That is not occurring. This has occurred within the borough without some of these hazards for many, many years, and many business operators are very successful at doing that, and operating this in a safe and effective manner, without affecting other operations and the public at large. The borough, within its purview, operates the parking spaces as part of its right-of-way, and that's something you have to be very sensitive to in terms of how you use it, because it is for the public good. And if we granted this type of operation or the reserved spaces to more retail establishments and restaurants, it'd be pretty quick that there wouldn't be a lot of parking downtown for the general public at all. And it kind of creates a situation where if you have enough money, you can do whatever you want to. And if you don't, you're left out in the cold. So this motion and another that'll appear later, I am kind of caught by the irony or the paradox of discussions that involve a desire to create a community that is relatively pedestrian-bicycle centered, that is then also contrasted with a desire to park immediately in front of wherever you want to go. And I find that very curious. We have had lots of people that have used large parking lots over the years. We had discussed at certain times, even formalized negotiations with organizations like the school district to use their facilities. I'm aware of private lots that are receiving payment for this type of activity, and we are electing to go around that, and that is fine. It's a pilot program. Many pilot programs often become permanent programs, and that is fine.
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Many pilot programs often become permanent programs.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, and if that happens, it's fine, but just, I do have some concerns with how this will operate, how it will affect residential occupancies that are nearby. I lived on Baltimore Street at the time, and it was very common for buses to park in front of the building, it was very common for those buses to idle in front of the building. I know that's illegal, but everyone knows how difficult that is to handle, and I don't expect the police to be running around 24/7 trying to stop buses from idling. That would be quite a bit of an ask. So I think I'll save the rest for the other motion, but related to kind of traffic and how we operate, but it does seem interesting to me that some of the decisions that are made. So, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, should this pass, Ms. Fissell, would it be...
Yeah, um, should this pass, Ms. Fissell, would it be possible for you to give us a monthly update for the duration of the pilot program? Let us know your experience and your department's experience with both compliance and enforcement.
Sure.
Thank you.
I do have a mock sign. Charles, do you have? On this, I'm, I mean, if anybody wants to change anything, but I just did a mock-up of a sign that, that, what it would, some of the information it would need on that sign, I did specifically put no idling.
I know. It's just what we, you know, what we end up with. We try the best. You know, I hope that this is successful. I hope that this is utilized. But to be very direct, I don't expect it to be. I expect people to do what they want to do. So, any other questions or comments?
I, I'll just also comment that clearly I'm for this pilot program. Um, I, I am not for, we've always done it this way. It's been this way forever. Don't change things. When something isn't working, in my opinion, and can be better for the town, we should try it. And a pilot program is a perfect opportunity to do that. It's clear that it's caused a problem, uh, in my opinion. The buses that used to come to town for general pickets are no longer coming to general pickets. They're coming downtown. I'm all for them buses coming downtown, but I'm also more for safety than anything else. Whether it's legal to stop traffic with a bus and unload and unload is, in my mind, irrelevant. It's unsafe. And it causes backup traffic blocks and blocks and blocks away from the square. This could be an opportunity to fix that and it could also be an opportunity for, to have buses in actual reserve parking spaces for buses. Bringing tour buses downtown is a great idea and I think it, 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 we are, um, fortunate to have some businesses that can accommodate such large bus groups. Great. Let's get them places to unload and park, park and unload safely.
Okay, very good. All right, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Berger?
Aye.
Mrs. Butterfield?
Aye.
Mr. Carr?
Aye.
Ms. Lawson?
Aye.
Mr. Lawver?
Aye.
Mr. Moon?
Aye.
Mr. Heiser?
Nay.
Six yea, one nay.
Any, uh, other questions then for Ms. Fissell this evening? All right, if not, on to Mr. Harbaugh, Public Works.
Good evening. Uh, hopefully you all saw my report. One highlight on my report is the street preservation contracts, especially for the public that is listening. Contract number two, which was the base repair contract, the base repairs were completed the week of June 19th, uh, prior to July 4th. Contract number one is the chip seal contract. They haven't, the contractor hasn't noticed proceed of July 10th. Unfortunately, we did not have a pre-construction meeting. Hope to have that this week and have them mobilize and come in and start, uh, doing those surface treatments on those streets. Those streets include Elm Street, Seminary Avenue, all of Seminary Avenue, all of North and South Howard Avenue, MacMillan Street, Ridge Avenue, Red Patch, and West Railroad Street. There will be parking restrictions on those streets to do those street treatments. And they will be, they will, the contractor is responsible for putting on door hangers to notify residents that this, this work is going to be happening in advance. And we will also have it on our website.
All right, any, uh, questions for Mr. Harbaugh?
Uh, it, it, forgive me if it's in, if it's in the report. I'm not seeing, seeing it. So I'll just ask a question. On the, on tree trimming, uh, for right-of-way, is it, is it also, does, do the Public Works also trim borough trees that are impeding on someone's property or rushing up against their building?
Yes.
So it's not just the right-of-way for traffic and pedestrians, but also if it's touching someone's building?
Correct.
The borough takes care of that.
Right, and there's also height restrictions for the sidewalks, too.
Thank you so much.
We're in the right-of-way, but the, the trees along the street, you're talking like maybe on York Street or Chambersburg Street?
Correct. If it's, if it's touching the building that it's next to.
Yes.
So there's the street, there's the tree, there's the building.
Correct. We, we do, we do turn away from the building.
Away, thank you.
Yeah, I would say if there's an issue, let them know. It's kind of like anything else. It's like, it's like if we think someone's screaming down Fourth Street, what do we do? We send the police officers to check.
You can't see all the trees at all times?
Huge eyes around and checks a lot. There are a lot of things. That's it. John could speak to how many, you know, publicly maintained lights there are and things in town. I mean, there's a lot of public infrastructure people don't think about, take it for granted.
Especially for the double-decker buses to go by.
Yeah. All right, any other questions for, uh, Mr. Harbaugh this evening? All right, if not, Mr. Clayball, engineer, sir.
Good evening, everyone, and I apologize. I know you just got my engineer's report today. I was on vacation last week and I didn't get it out today. But I will, um, do my best to get you up to speed with everything that I have listed there. I, I realize there is four motions on your agenda. And we might have some more discussion when we get to each of those items, but I'll burn down through, uh, what I have in my own report first. First, the Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project. That's the Baltimore Street project. I don't have any updates on my report just because we haven't had an authorization from PennDOT yet to proceed with the project. We've been hit with yet another hurdle. Now they want us, even though the, the grant was approved, what to do, the, the design in-house. You guys already authorized CS Davidson to start the design. Now PennDOT's making us go back through the consultant selection process. So that we'll have to do an advertisement and go through that first process again. Budget's already set, so it's a qualifications-type process, but it'll add another month or two to the, to the process before we can get started. So there is a motion on your agenda for that item. The second item on my report is about the Gettysburg Interloop Phase B project. I did watch back your Public Work, or yeah, the, um, the Borough. Help the, the bit, the, not the business meeting.
Workshop.
Meeting, sorry. And, um, there was a couple of questions that came up at that meeting and I just wanted to kind of clarify. One was about the schedule of the project. Charles did a good job of, of giving you the bottom line and that is sooner we can get this answer about the one-way, the better, so we can finalize the design. That's the, really the critical path here. But the, the, the more thorough answer for when we're going to go to construction is there's multiple, multiple answers to that question. The Washington Street portion of this project will go to construction next year. Um, and we have to do that in order to meet a deadline by the CDBG money. We only have three years to spend that first year of CDBG money and that's going to come due, uh, at the, at the beginning of 2025. So we have to go to construction next year, um, to meet that deadline. If we don't have all of the project funded, which at this point there's still funding gaps, uh, we're going to have to break this project up into two phases. We'll have to do the Washington Street for, uh, portion first because that's where all the utility work has to happen with the borings under the CSX railroad and the new storm pipe that you guys, we have, we've talked about, um, a lot of times. If we can't fund the entire project, which is most likely we're not going to be able to, there's going to be another portion on Racehorse Alley that we'll have to follow up with at a different time. But once we do the Washington Street portion of it, we'll have already set the stage for the one-way alley because we'll, we'll adjust the opening at Washington Street and Racehorse Alley accordingly. So that's why we kind of need to know the, the answer to that question to be able to finalize the design on North Washington Street. Uh, the, the other item that, that was discussed at the workshop meeting was about if we pick a one-way solution, and I, and I talked to Mr. Moon about this a little bit after the meeting. If we pick a one-way option, um, and we want to change this in the future, what are, uh, the, the changes, the, the, the construction changes that would have to happen in the field? So, and, and the answer is it depends. It depends on exactly how we build this. So as we know, we need a contra-flow lane. So we have one-way traffic one way. We had to have a contra-flow lane for the bikes going the other way. We've talked about that a little bit. The chief weighed in. If we have a contra-flow lane and you build that as a separate, uh, surface, so you put the, the traffic lane as a permeable paver, that's what we're proposing, and then you put in the bike lane as, let's say, red concrete, well then you wouldn't be able to easily change it in the future. So if you'd want to make it so that you could change it in the future, you would make the entire thing out of permeable pavers and you would do a spray-applied, uh, uh, like a type of a polymer, plastic, spray-applied, um, line striping. Instead of having two different surfaces, it would just all be, uh, the permeable paver so that you could come through and, and power wash those off. There's a machine that comes through and, and it scrubs and power washes them off and you can remove all those markings so that you could change it. So, so the answer is yes, you can change it someday in the future, but there's a little bit more to it than just, you know, just clicking your fingers and, and changing it. There is going to be line striping and some things like that that would have to change as long as we set it up that way. So I think first it's, we've got through the decision on the one-way. I, I understand there's a motion on the agenda tonight to have that discussion. So once we get through that deci- decision, then we can move to the, to the next step of the design and we'll figure out the, the surface and how we exactly want to design that. Um, the only other thing that I wanted to update you on with the design is, um, and I, and I reported this months ago, but just to remind you, we have to move a water line in order to be able to complete this project. That's going to require a CSX, um, um, boring. So we have started that process. Um, we'll be working with GMA since they will own that boring ultimately. So they'll be the applicant of that boring, but we have started that design. Um, and the other thing is there is an, an, a motion on your agenda as well. The first motion under my tab about the CSX, um, Transportation Inc. We have basically, we've submitted a design to them. They've authorized everything, permitted everything, but we had to go, enter into this agreement with them so that when we go through construction, we follow their rules. We had to pay the $6,500 permit fee, which we budgeted for. We have to agree to the overnight boring, which we know we have experience with with Stratton Street. Once we start that boring, we can't stop the boring unless the machine breaks or we're finished. We've got to continue, um, until it's done. So there will be a couple of days. I'll give you some updates when that time comes. It'll be next year sometime, like I said, where there is going to be a loud diesel engine, um, running on North Washington Street at that railroad track for several days until that boring is complete. So there's some of those things that they, they want you to know about upfront and agree to, and that's what this agreement is, is, is those kind of things. It's basically just to get our permit, just like we did on Stratton Streets. Basically the same thing. Um, I believe that is it for, oh, and, um, Jacob did a report last month as well about the two additional feet of right-of-way that would be needed for the contra-flow lane and, and the property owner, SPG Capital, was, was all in favor of that. So that one seemed like the easy side. When I talked to Jim Beasacker of the Gettysburg College, um, he seemed in favor of it, but he still had to run it up the ladder at the Gettysburg College. He said that that asking for two feet, feet was a much different discussion than when we were originally asking for an additional lane. It was a no then. Um, two feet is not a no, is basically where it stands right now, but he's still trying to get us an answer on that, so. Um, the only other thing that I wanted to, oh, a couple more things. Um, the 2023 street maintenance project, Robbie did a good job of outlining where we stand there and what streets are going to get preserved. One thing that did change is, as Robbie said, JVI completed, um, contract number two, which was doing all of the base repairs. Um, there was one change we made that I wanted to, to make, uh, note of, and that is Prince Street. So we were trying to do all of the streets in the Howard, McMillan, Ridge area, and that included Prince. But when Robbie and I started investigating that a little bit further before we got to it, we started realizing that there really is no base under that street. We're kind of wasting money. That street basically needs a completely rebuild. So you'll see that we, we'll be skipping that street. We didn't do any base repairs, uh, with contract, um, number two. So at this point, we took that off the list. Whenever Robbie was reading off the list of streets, that was, Prince Street was excluded from that and that had been in previous reports that I had given you, so I wanted to, to, to update you on that. Quick update on the Racehorse Alley Parking Garage Maintenance. That payment has been made to the contractor. We're going to be closing out the contract and that'll be removed from my engineer's report in future months. And then finally, um, there's also a motion on your agenda for the 2023 Bridge Maintenance Project. Nothing exciting about that. We are doing work on three bridges. That's the East Water Street Bridge, the Constitution Avenue Bridge, and the little bridge at the intersection of Court and Mayor Alley where the sycamore tree is that we just took down. Uh, we did put the project out to bid. Uh, we received favorable bids. Um, the lowest bid being JV, um, JDI Solutions, um, not JVI. It's a different paving contractor. This is a, a concrete repair contractor. It's the same contractor that, um, just completed the work on our parking garage. Their bid was $99,198, which is just below our $100,000 budget. So we're happy with their work. We're happy with the bid we got. So you do have CS Davidson's, um, recommendation to award to, to JDI for those, uh, bridge repairs. I believe that is all I have. Um, unless you have any other questions?
So any questions at this point that are not related to motions, I'll, I'll give another opportunity at the end also. Anything, Mr. Clayball, before motions? All right, so our first one is, uh, dealing with the, the boring, which it's, it's the diesel engine, but it's that grinding, too.
Mm-hmm, and it's the gr-
You're, you're going to feel it.
Yeah.
What is the diameter of the boring that you've done?
So we just, we were able to reduce it a lot. There's going to be two borings. Uh, one for the, the storm pipe and one for the water pipe. Water pipe's only 12 inches. Um, the storm pipe, I think, is 40 inches. We had to stay below the, the 48 in order to be able to avoid some geotechnical analysis, but we got, we were able to get it down to 40-inch casing. And then our storm pipe, I think, is a 30-inch pipe that fits within the 40-inch casing. So it's a pretty good size, pretty good sized pipe.
It's impressive when they do it and I hope it does relieve some of our issues there on Chambersburg Street. That's our goal. I think that it was successful a bit there in the Stratton York area, so. We have that motion, please, for, uh, CSX.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing entry into a facility encroachment agreement with CSX Transportation, Inc. relative to the construction, maintenance, or repair, certain stormwater management improvements, and further offer authorizing Charles R. Gable, MPA Borough Manager, and Sarah L. Stoll, Assistant Borough Manager, Secretary, to sign, attest, witness, execute, and deliver the agreement on behalf of the borough.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Any, uh, questions or comments about the agreement with CSX? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, next is our adoption of the PennDOT policy and procedure.
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution for the purpose of authorizing the adoption of the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation Policy and Procedure for Consultant Selection by the Borough of Gettysburg as the sponsor of the Gettysburg Gateway Connectivity Project for the facilitation of grant funding for the project under the Federal Lands Access Program.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second relate to our flat, our application here. Any, uh, questions or comments? All right, if not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, next, our bridge maintenance.
I'll make a motion to award the 2023 Gettysburg Borough Bridge Maintenance Project to the lowest qualified, responsible, and responsive bidder, JVI Site Solutions LLC, at its bid amount of $99,198.98.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second for our bridge maintenance, uh, project. Bid. Uh, any questions or comments?
I, I did have a question for Chad, just sort of a follow-up. You're, you, you mentioned a couple of bridge projects. That's, they're all included in this motion. Is that correct?
That's right, yes.
Not just the Water Street?
Three bridges, yes. Three bridges.
Okay, Water Street, Constitution. What was the third one?
It's that, the small bridge, um, that's right behind the Fawnsworth at Mayor and Court Alley.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Uh, any other, uh, questions or comments on the bridges? All right, seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that takes us to Racehorse Alley.
I'll make a motion to authorize the Borough Engineer, CS Davidson Incorporated, to design the Gettysburg Interloop Phase B1 and Phase B2 for the one-way directional realignment of Racehorse Alley between Buford Avenue and North Washington Street, identified as option number six, the Franklin Funnel, as presented by the Borough Engineer.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and second. Uh, questions and comments about the, uh, Racehorse Alley design? Yes, Mr. Lawver?
Uh, apologize for not being able to make the workshop, but I wasn't able to attend that. And that brings me some questions. I've tried running uh, Chambersburg Street as opposed to Racehorse Alley. opposed to Racehorse Alley the last several weeks, just to get a feel for how much my frustration level's going to go up. In this weekend, it went up a lot because basically Route 30 was at a standstill more than once. Now, I think part of that problem is, is the traffic signal system cameras on top of the hotel no longer work. There's a lot of reasons for that, but those decisions were made by previous people, which as far as I know, that permit's still good, and they should be operational, but they're not. So when the square locks up, that locks up Route 30. Also, sitting at Franklin Street on the Kenny side, trying to get out because people block the intersections through three traffic light changes and a fourth traffic light change because a guy in front of me wanted to make a left-hand turn, and there's no left-hand turns at Franklin Street, just brings a lot of questions about how this Franklin Street funnel is going to work. Questions such as, are we going to put left-turn lanes in there? Because now you're going to dump all this alley traffic out at Franklin Street. So if the first guy wants to turn left, everybody behind him's stuck, the way it currently is. So if you want to put a left-turn lane in there, you're going to have to revise traffic signal permit. Also, we're going to have to notify people in Chambersburg Street. If they turn left there thinking they're going to beat the traffic, like some did this weekend, basically, it's going to have to be posted as no outlet. Because one way east, one way west, to funnel out means that if you turn off Chambersburg Street into Franklin Street, you can't get out. You won't be able to go anywhere except back to cul-de-sac, turn around, come back out. And I assume that the bicycle lane is allowed to go two-way, even though bicycles do have to follow the same rules of the road as vehicles. So I assume that we're going to put in these separate lanes for bicycles so that they can travel the alley both ways. At least that's my understanding, and I think I'm correct on that.
There would be contra-flow lanes, yes.
Yeah. So my biggest concern is, we've talked about being able to change it back by flipping a couple of signs here and there, but that's really not going to work because we're going to have to do traffic signal work whether we want to or not for it to work. And I don't know that that's been addressed, and I don't know if it's been budgeted for.
Yeah, if you could change one-way, you know, directional type things without a traffic study, my chef stock rests his soul, right? We would have, that was a big hindrance to pursuing anything back here on Schoolhouse and so forth was, you know, are you going to undertake a study when it feels pretty confident, we felt pretty confident that no one was going to want to make a change anyway. So for that, usually, offense Chad, but maybe $10,000 we might have into it. So, yeah, I watch the work session. I don't really think it's accurate to say we could just take down a few signs. I think once you're in it, you're in it at least to the point that you'd have to engage professional services.
Well, Franklin Street's one of the only intersections, both at Middle Street and at Chambersburg Street, that we don't have a left-turn lane in. And those traffic lights were kind of forced upon us back when they were put in because I was involved in that. PennDOT kind of decided they were going in, not the Borough, and they didn't put left-turn lanes in. So if we're going to make this change at Chambersburg Street, I think we have to look at least at that signal. And I think we should look at the one at Franklin and Middle. And I just, I just think that both of those deserve left-turn lanes, and especially Franklin and Chambersburg, when you're going to dump this extra traffic out.
Yeah, I mean, I think logic would dictate, you'd like to think that, you know, that discussion that, you know, we could just change it back. You'd like to think that that would be legal, but you got to remember that the government's involved. Logical, it doesn't always match up with state regulation. And I remember when the Franklin Street lights weren't there, and we used to have a guy that lived on the other, out Fairfield Road, trying to get to the firehouse and say, he would curse the Franklin Street lights because they made a big change. You used to be able to get across there. Now you can't. From a practical standpoint, you know, when this is all over, I know that Racehorse Alley is an alley. I'm not ignorant. I'm aware of what alley is supposed to be. I'm also aware that this would have been a small, one-horse town, and then we had a Civil War battle fought here. And that's a big factor when it comes to this east-west flow of traffic because that heavily restricts the ability of people to get east or west, both within town, within the limits of the borough, and outside. I noted in the work session, there was mention about, you know, truck traffic, and we've had folks try to impact that going back to at least the 1980s. And at the end of the day, the reality is, is the discussion usually ends up with, okay, well, where are they to go? And the answer is, there is nowhere. The idea of a bypass went by the wayside roughly the time that, oh, out, I keep forgetting the name of this development out there on Mama's Rock Road, Ridgewood. About the time Ridgewood was built, that was the end of that discussion. That's not possible after that because it would have to be so far out of the way. So, I mean, I know that the traffic counts were done, and I respect the work of the professionals that were done with this. I'm aware that you can't always really see the impacts until it's over. So, yeah, I appreciate Mr. Weiner coming. I remember he has been here times over the years. If there's one thing in this whole discussion, I think after this is over, if this goes as I anticipate it will, there are going to be a lot of folks that are going to be upset. And in some ways, though, I am, have been surprised. I think Mr. Carr has been the champion of this on wanting to hear from the public again and again and again. I have been really surprised for this whole process. It's something that was, really, I think will have a lot of impact. The complete lack of public input has been striking. And people comment if you really push them, but I think the reality is, is this isn't going to be something that's going to probably impact me every day. I don't really go out that direction that often. But it's going to impact people. So we'll see how they deal with it. I hate to say, kind of shame on them for not speaking up.
Well, Matt contacted me before the workshop session to get my opinions and everything, and I think he probably reported accurately to our conversation. But I will not be voting in favor of this tonight. I'm going to go back to my original decision, which is no change at this point.
And I also think you will hear from the public when they vote. They may not be saying anything right now, but this is going to affect our local residents, and they will vote when people are running for office. That's what I think. And Chris, I think if I remember you saying it right, you use Racehorse Alley. I'm Sally down the alley. I drive in alleys in Gettysburg. And I go to Gettysburg, too, because I can get someplace quickly. And I think you will hear from people eventually.
Well, I use Racehorse Alley a lot, and that's why the last week I've tried to use Chambersburg Street because the Franklin Funnel takes Racehorse Alley option away from me. And the biggest frustration is trying to get out of Franklin Street. Now, I'll be the first to say, police can't be everywhere every time. But God, this weekend, I wish they'd have been on every intersection because of the traffic signals that were blocked by people who just won't stop anticipating that light to change. They have to go through because it's going to save them 30 seconds on the other side and block the traffic. And when you sit through three or four lights because of one stupid person, it gets very frustrating, very quickly. And without blocking the intersections, like I said, one guy coming out of Franklin Street wanting to turn left on Chambersburg, everybody else is going to sit there if you don't put in left-turn lanes. 29 years I worked in this town with the Highway Department, we fought for those left-turn lanes. We fought PennDOT on them because PennDOT's original decision was that we had to put green arrows in for left-turn lanes and everything else, and we got away from that. It was not an easy battle, but we won it. It works. Whether you like it or not, it does affect parking because parking would have to be removed, but it still works. And so without the, without any consideration for left-turn lanes at Franklin Street late, and my frustrations this weekend personally, I can't support it.
I just want to address a couple of things there. I will apologize if I portrayed the reversal of the one-way as a simple process. That was not my intent. I realized that there is an onus associated with that. What I was simply trying to say is that of all of the things we are doing, that would be the cheapest and easiest to reverse as opposed to the engineering. And I would stand by my statements from previous meetings that if all we're doing is repaving this, then we're spending way too much money. And the other thing was, I think we can all acknowledge that this weekend is not like most weekends. It is, it is a time when the borough grinds to a halt. We all know this. Everybody has a good chuckle when they talk about all of their friends who leave town for this particular weekend. And, I mean, I had to go to work several times this weekend. I chose to walk. And I went up and down, I went up and down Racehorse Alley, and I will tell you, I did not see any cars. So I'm not seeing this massive volume of traffic shunting over to the alley, even when traffic is backed up on Chambersburg Street.
I have a question for our engineer, and that is a point following up a point that Mr. Lawber made about people coming down Franklin Street, say from Kenny's, and heading across Chambersburg Street into the other Franklin Street, kind of the funnel part of it. What would that signage look like, Chad? What would it, would it say, what was the traffic ahead, or what would it look like?
Or no outlet. There's typically a dead-end street, or no-through traffic, or no outlet. Those are kind of the three options. It would be appropriate to stick one of those signs there. We would still need to allow traffic into there because there are some residents back Franklin Street, so.
Right, right.
But, yeah, there could be a stray car that doesn't belong in there. Every once in a while, head in that direction if there wasn't a sign there at the front telling them not to do that. They would just end up having to turn around in the cul-de-sac and come right back out.
Okay, okay. Because that is the concern that Mr. Lawber expressed, and I do want to make sure that we're addressing that so that we don't get cars going in and having to make, you know, have to turn around to come back out, so.
Yeah, you would stick a sign up there and hope that they would see that and not, and not make that turn. But you're still going to end up with some stray cars doing it.
Right, right. Because I think there are about maybe four houses down there, across the alley, actually, towards the tracks, the railroad tracks. So, okay, thank you.
Was there ever any discussion that the solution to this issue be a pilot program?
Deal. What did you say, Julie?
A pilot program, like we just discussed in another solution.
I don't know how you could. You have to ordain, like, our list of one-way streets are ordained and everything. And I don't, I don't see how that could be done, particularly with the amount of construction that's going to occur here. I appreciate what Chad's telling us in terms of, you know, what can be done and undone in terms of coatings on, you know, the, can't say pavement, but coatings on the labor, street labor, pavers. But I, that's probably pretty unlikely.
And my other question, when I drove it a few days ago, there was parking on both sides of Franklin in that half a block between the funnel and Chambersburg Street. Are those metered? I didn't notice. I just noticed I had some quandary about going through there.
I think they are.
One side is metered and the other is not?
Which side?
I think if you're looking south, that right side is metered.
Yeah, that's, I think that's right.
Because every once in a while lined up there.
The west side of the street.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I defer to the parking department, but I think so.
I don't think she's sure either. Her and Robbie are talking. How many street lights and how many parking meters, you know, and how, yeah, it's a lot of, a lot of things to remember. Do you know if it's metered?
Are we talking north Franklin or south Franklin?
We're on north Franklin.
North Franklin, the cul-de-sac is RPP on both sides of the street.
What about between Chambersburg and Racehorse?
Between Chambersburg and the alley.
RPP.
Is it?
The whole way from Chambersburg down to the cul-de-sac.
To the cul-de-sac. Because it's not that large.
Both sides. No, it's not.
We're not talking about a very long distance here. That's kind of one of my other concerns about the whole thing is, from a practical perspective, if people go in there, that light's going to get stacked very quickly because you're not going to get a green light very often. You know, this is a decision that I've known has been coming for at least eight years. When I won the primaries eight years ago, not very long after that, I got a phone call, and there was somebody in my living room talking about this. And I was presented with basically what is the Franklin Funnel. And here, this is our plan. This is what we're going to do. Because HABIT paid for the, you know, the interloop study and everything. And so, you know, in some ways, I, when I look at, and I, I think that everyone has to accept at the end of the day, things like this are political decisions. So, you know, over the course of the years, you often have folks that lean, they say, oh, the experts say this, and the experts, I mean, when the experts realize you're going to make a decision, it's going to affect people's interests. I don't think this is the most dramatic decision you're ever going to make. But just realize, it's a political decision, absolutely. Not a partisan one, but a political one. So even when the, the list of things that were figured into the calculation were, were created, I'm looking at them like, it's kind of, you get to that, you know, question, is this a HABIT kind of project or a Borough project? And there, our interests overlap, you know, most of the time, but not necessarily with every aspect of the Borough. Is that going to overlap? I do think it's a rather impractical traffic pattern. I'm glad that, at this point, you know, for many years, it was not discussed overtly that the objective was to get automobile traffic out of the alley. I'm glad we've gotten to a point where that's openly discussed because that's absolutely, the first time I saw that design, I thought, what, what in God's name are we doing with this? Like, how, what is the purpose of this? The purpose is to get cars out of the alley. I wish people didn't have to rely on the alley the way they do. A lot of locals do. If I thought it was a safety concern, I would vote in favor of this. I bicycle that alley fairly often, have many, many times, dozens, if not hundreds of times, never had an issue in that alley. You know, I am a little concerned that, not concerned, but there's this kind of projection that making Racehorse Alley into this bicycle thoroughfare is going to somehow, like, transport it and make it into a, like, bicycle pedestrian oasis, you know, with businesses crop back on the alley. And I could be wrong, but I really don't see it. There was comparison to the Netherlands, and I don't think Racehorse Alley is going to look like the positive parts of Amsterdam you're thinking about. I wish that it weren't so, but it's always going to be more like Amsterdam in terms of the narcotics consumption and trading that occurs in that area. That's just the way it is. I wish it wasn't. But I knew people that owned property very proximate to that area, and they could not sell it for the amount that buyers wanted to pay because the bank wouldn't back the deal because of, that was a factor. It's the nature of that neighborhood. It's unfortunate, but it's just the way it is. I hope that the lighting improves it. I hope that more attention improves it. I don't think that funneling all the traffic to Franklin Street is going to improve that part of that aspect of it. I hope that it does improve.
Mr. President, one thing that you're not, I respect your comments that you're making, and I understand what you're saying, but your comments don't address the one particular piece that I think we, as a council, need to look at, is that we, by allowing the traffic pattern to exist the way it is now, and I, I use that alley both in my car and on foot and bicycle, is that, how can we condone vehicles to drive it up on people's personal property? And that happens. And it happens every time there are two cars passing by on the alley, and the, some of the cars are actually way on somebody's property. And so I think that's something that, I think we can't just let that go. I think, knowing that, that people are driving on people's personal property, I think that has to be addressed as well.
No, you're, you're correct. If we were talking about one-way west, I think I'd be fully in favor, actually, without question. I even go back and forth, you know, whether status quo or one-way west would be better, you know, one or the other. You know, there was a vision 30 years ago to make that a two-way area, street or alley. It couldn't be done. I had the discussions with Gesburg College, Mr. Beasacker, it was before COVID hit. So it was either January, February, 2020. It was clear there was no interest in giving up any right-of-way to make that happen, even on that block. So, once that discussion was closed, I thought, well, it's going to be pretty much impossible to keep this two-way. So you're not, you're not... So you're not, you're not wrong in any way. I just, I think I would favor more if we ended up with a one-way and, I mean, try to explain to people that it's one-way in two directions. That's always an interesting conversation.
I'm not even referring to the area with the college where the Nouse building is, but if you go down to the other side of that Franklin Street, you know, people's homes, apartment buildings, I mean, I can probably practically run over trash barrels, trashcans down there because they're, they're moving out of the way, and so.
Yeah, no, and that's the, that's the shame of it, is during this time period, this eight-year time period, the house on the corner was for sale. It was not in good condition. It's been fixed up, I think substantially since. And then the other narrow point is down there at the Creekside Apartments, which itself is a safety hazard because of the flood.
But even the middle between that house that you're talking about, that gray house that a corporation purchased and fixed up.
Yep.
And the Creekside Apartments, there are other buildings along there, and people drive right into, kind of their driveways, in fact, yards actually, you know. Most of them have gravel now, but there's some grass there, and people just drive right up on that.
Yeah, I think my point there was if you could, if we could have gotten that house that SPG purchased and eminent domain part of Creekside there, you could have made it work. But these things didn't happen, and that's the thing.
Right? Like, there was an effort made over time, but it never came to fruition, so your point is well taken. But I just, the argument that it has to be a funnel based on accidents, 20 years, I've never been to an accident there.
I haven't heard that argument.
Ever. Well, based on safety, which is based on accidents.
Did you look into that, chief, about the accidents?
So I just can't. I've never, never gone to one there, ever.
There's not an appreciable number of accidents there at all. I can't even think of any, now, accidents in Franklin. Chambersburg is a different story. I was telling Mr. Berger earlier, I actually have investigated one accident since I've been here as chief, that the patrol hasn't gone down and taken, and I took for patrol, it was at Franklin Street, Chambersburg. I feel remiss if I don't say, I, I just want to say that I do have a safety concern with bicycles traveling against the flow of traffic without a divided type of lane put there for them. I, I think that's a safety issue, and I think that's going to push them to do it in other places, people will think they can do it. I also, like I say, have a great deal of respect for traffic studies. I've, I've been involved with them my entire career, but what they don't take into account is one of the most unpredictable of variables, and that's the driver. You can't think about what somebody's psyche is, and if you're pushing people out of there and down onto Chambersburg Street, it's, even if it's 100 trips, as this gentleman said, of that signal, that's 100 times that signal's popped. Even if you cut it in half and say it's 50, that's 50 times that signal's going to pop red for Chambersburg and back that up some more. And to the point Mr. Lawver made about this weekend, you know, we have a significant number of special events in Gettysburg that, that folks cut down through there with, and I'm going to tell you that, that the police, we have our own special ways we get around when it's, it's really busy out, and that alley's one of them. Which, so, they're the, you know, from a police perspective about making that Franklin funnel, I have, I have some concerns. No concerns, the signal won't handle it because the signal's going to function properly. But my concern is where the backup's going to go from that, because we have backup now without this. And not just for special events, we have backups daily if you come to rush hour times and things getting in and out of the square and trucks and things like that. So this is going to add more congestion there. Is it an appreciable amount? I don't know. But I, I think to, to say that it won't affect that Chambersburg-Franklin intersection is, is not true.
This is an issue I've talked to a lot of people about. It is true, we got most input from, I appreciate all the work they did, but given a lot of the people that I've talked to who bike and walk that alley, still don't quite understand the funnel. It just seems impractical. It doesn't make sense to people. I've said that I would support a bike path. I think one-way continuous from Washington Street to Beaufort makes more sense. I really do think that, agree with John, my instincts are this is going to really cause a lot of increased traffic on Chambersburg Street. Like the mayor said, we're not hearing from people now, but I guarantee you, once the construction happens and you have that going one-way, both-ways funnel out, I think we're really going to hear from people.
We'll see.
So, I'm going to be voting against this, this evening. I would be for one-way continuous. We had that discussion, been talking about that for, for several meetings, but I will be voting against it tonight.
All right. Further questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. President, I did want to add one other perspective. We did get a chance to meet with Tron. They're the owners now of Creekside, they don't own all of the Creekside Apartments, but the majority of them. And they were willing to come out and, and talk to us about there because we would, if we wanted to have two-way into their property, we would need some right-of-way from them as well, a few feet of right-of-way. They expressed their opinion that they would like two-way also to their eastern parking lot. So they have the parking lot that comes right in off of Beaufort Avenue, but they also have 10 spaces on the east side of, of their building as well, and they were hoping to have two lanes all the way to that east side. So I did want to, told him that I wasn't sure that that was consistent with the master plan, the design, or any of the options that have been proposed, but I told him that I would relay his perspective to you guys so that you heard it.
Well, their own garage makes that prohibitive.
Across, across the creek at their garage.
Like, that's one of the obstacles.
Yeah, that's the obstacle.
I mean, it's, it's a key obstacle.
So it's kind of, it's kind of like, it opens up on both sides of it, but.
Like, they don't, like, they like to have it, I understand that. Yeah, that's, Ms. Lawson's right about that part, you know, the feet just aren't there. So that's fair. All right. Further discussion yet?
Just, just, I, I hear from colleagues' opinions about a negative impact, but I would like to say that I feel like the majority of what we heard from the public was the positive impact that this could have on the town. And the fact remains that alleys should not be a cut-through for town. That's just because it has been, doesn't mean it should be. It's not what alleys were meant for. I think this would beautify the town in a way. I think it would help improve what the alleys look like, and maybe some of that stuff that's been happening in said alleys aren't going to happen again. We can hope. And as far as upsetting folks after it happens, of course it will. You didn't hear from them before, we'll hear from them after. And if it makes them vote, by all means, get out and vote. Be part of the process. So I'm in favor of it. And I hope it makes people vote. I do.
That's probably one benefit I can see, at least. Maybe I framed that the wrong way. Anything that would make people vote would make me a little happier because it's a bit abysmal.
Absolutely.
Everybody wants to complain, and about 30% at best. All right. Any other comments? All right, Ms. Stoll, roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Berger.
Nay.
Mrs. Butterfield. Mr. Carr.
Aye.
Ms. Lawson.
Aye.
Mr. Lawver.
Nay.
Mr. Moon.
Aye.
Mr. Heiser.
Nay.
Nay. Four nay, three yea.
So, from the interest of giving the engineer direction, I'd entertain a motion to, well, let me give you the motion I entertain. I'll write it down for you here. A motion to authorize the borough engineer, C.S. Davidson Incorporated, to design the Gesberg Interlude Phase B1 and Phase B2 for the one-way directional realignment of Racehorse Alley between Beaufort Avenue and North Washington Street. Which option was one-way west? We're looking at that.
I'm trying to find that right now.
Could you just clarify this? You're, you're putting forward a motion that would make it one-way from Beaufort Avenue to Washington, Washington Street. Do I have that correct?
The opposite. One-way west would be what I'm going to propose.
I'm sorry, one-way west would be?
One-way west would be from Washington Street to Beaufort.
To Beaufort, okay. Thank you. That's right.
I, I would like to give Mr. Clayball direction because I know that there's been an expression again and again that we can keep putting this off, but at some point, it's going to start to impact that design even at Washington Street.
Exactly, yeah.
So, so one-way west had two options, it was options four and five. Option four was without the contra-flow lane. Option five was with the contra-flow lane. So essentially, I believe what you're making the recommendation for is option five.
Did option five require right-of-way that we do not have?
It does require two feet of right-of-way from both SPG and the college.
Okay. So I think that we could direct you to do that, and if the college, SPG had expressed positive feedback.
Correct.
And the college was undecided, so if the college came back with a negative result, then we could address that, probably by eliminating a contra-flow lane, but what I hear from the.
Or you could put a sign up where, where there's a, it's not, not a common thing, but there's plenty of streets around, I'm sure you've seen this, where the street narrows at a bridge and it says "Yield to Oncoming Cars." So where you don't have the proper lane width, like, for instance, if you only had a, a five-foot bike lane and it had to go down to three feet just to get across the college's property, what you would have is a "Yield to Oncoming Traffic" sign for that one small piece. So you could still do it with having a contra-flow everywhere except for that one piece.
Okay, I hear what you're saying.
It would just be a wonky "Yield to Oncoming Traffic" sign.
Yeah, I'd say let's, let's make sure that we have that discussion, let's make sure we communicate to Jim Biesecker.
Absolutely.
That this is going to be an issue that we need to get up to the proper levels sooner rather than later. So you can get what you need. Because I, I understand what you're saying, but I also, every time we talk about practical nature of things, and Mr. Moon's commented a few times about certain areas of this existing interlude, and the way that parts of it are constructed, and that you have to get off your bicycle and you have to do this and that, and setting someone up to have to stop mid-block doesn't sound very practical. Okay, all right, so it's option five. Does it have a name to it?
One-way west with contra-flow lane and additional right-of-way.
Can you repeat that again, please?
Option five, one-way west with contra-flow lane and additional right-of-way.
Okay.
Okay, so I will read this for you, and if someone wants to make it though, that'd be great. A motion to authorize the borough engineer, C.S. Davidson Incorporated, to design the Gesberg Interlude Phase B1 to Phase B2 for the one-way directional realignment of Racehorse Alley between Beaufort Avenue and North Washington Street, identified as option five, one-way west with contra-flow lane and additional right-of-way, as presented by the borough engineer. So moved?
Have a motion, is there a second?
Second. Okay, a motion and a second, the opportunity for questions and comments.
Chad, what number was this on as far as the checkmark ticks? The Franklin funnel had the most favorable.
It was either tied or second on engineering.
Yeah, I believe that's the number. Two.
I, I agree.
Yes, this is number two.
At worst, it was, it was second, I know that. In the case. Let me pull this up before we.
I think the only other.
It was three. Franklin funnel had 32.
Number three, what was number two?
No left turns from alley to North Washington Street. That had 30, it's total score 30.
Right.
And then one-way west was the next at 28.
And one-way west with no turn, or, pardon me, no turn on the Washington Street, that described, help me out there. That was one-way east?
All, all that is, is adding, adding a sign.
There's no change with one side.
Basically no change to the alley, except for the alley. You add a sign, it says you can't turn left from eastbound Racehorse Alley onto northbound Washington Street. So I didn't really have an exhibit per se for that, for adding one sign.
Got you.
Now, for, for, just one other clarification, and maybe for the chief's purposes here, when we're talking about the contra-flow lane, we were talking about some difference, differences of how that's designed, and I did check some design manuals. You don't necessarily need to have a vertical separation for that contra-flow lane. You can do it with a separate road markings, double yellow line still, just like it's an oncoming traffic, but you don't need vertical markings, so it wouldn't impede a snowplow per se. Because our snowplows can't fit down a five-foot lane. So I did want to clarify that you can do a contra-flow lane without the vertical barrier. If that makes sense. And that would have been the same whether we did Franklin funnel with contra-flow or one-way west with, with contra-flow.
Does this motion get to the detail? I notice, because we never really updated the slideshow, this still shows parking spaces on Racehorse Alley.
Yeah, so that's going to be, that'll be the next, the next question. I mean, it could go, this could go with or without.
That's a later conversation.
That's a later discussion.
Okay. You know how I feel about that.
And honestly, it could go either, we could do it with or without those.
Okay.
Because I think we have like 28 feet of, of right-of-way at that location, so that's enough right-of-way.
Further questions and comments? So as this stands, we're talking about what was identified as option five. This is one-way west with two feet of additional right-of-way for a contra-flow lane, and realize that that right-of-way is essentially up in the air. We're not totally sure that we'll have that. And if we don't, we would have to address, you know, whether that would mean scrubbing that few feet or eliminating it altogether, or what to do. But the idea here is to give Mr. Clayball direction because there are significant amounts of money that are spent when they get to the point of actually designing this, and that was discussed some months ago, where it's like, we'll just design a whole bunch of them. Well, like anything else, you get that level of detail, those are a lot of hours already that's spent. All right, questions or comments? All right, if not, Ms. Stoll.
Mr. Berger.
Aye.
Mrs. Butterfield.
Aye.
Mr. Carr.
Aye.
Ms. Lawson.
Aye.
Mr. Lawver.
Nay.
Mr. Moon.
Aye.
Mr. Heiser.
Aye.
Six yea, one nay.
All right. So you have your direction.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions for Mr. Clayball?
We have a question, again, I just want clarification.
Yep.
And that this one-way, option five, one-way west with the contra lane and additional right-of-way, you will not be able to turn left on Washington Street, is that correct?
No, you're going the other way.
You can't travel that way, so no.
Right, okay.
No, you can't. Yeah, this was the, kind of one of my arguments with this in the beginning, if you had to choose east versus west, was that if somebody's traveling west, they're making a right-hand turn into Racehorse Alley and a right-hand turn on a 30, and that seemed more practical than trying to cross over a lane of traffic on Beaufort, and then that left-hand turn out of there is a problem.
I understand that, okay.
Yeah.
Does that include the college, though? I mean, the trucks and things from Nouse will have to go down on Franklin, which is go down to Beaufort, correct?
Yeah, and that's, and that's kind of was my argument. There, and I understand the, the concern involved when they bring tractor-trailers into Nouse Warehouse and getting those unloaded.
They don't usually bring tractor-trailers in. They usually, it's usually box trucks.
I know, I know. I used to drive those box trucks.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, but when I discussed this with Mr. Biesecker, that was his concern, that the times when that occurs, and I know it's not often, but when it occurs, that that would, giving up the right-of-way there would cause them a problem with being able to do that. Because, yeah, I did think about, much like how Mr. Lawver drove Chambersburg Street, I thought mentally about how often we went in and out of that alley in those years that I worked there, in the summers, and man, that's, they're going to spend a lot of time sitting on Chambersburg Street. But that's just the way it is. on Chambersburg Street, but that's just the way it is. They'll have to be a little more thoughtful about what they're going to the warehouse for, try to reduce their trips.
But what you just voted on, you can still turn left at Beaufort Avenue?
Yeah, you're right, yeah. I meant when you came to get in, in if it was one-way eastbound, the most natural thing would be you'd be traveling east on thirty and you would duck in, you know, which is if you're going across, but yeah, no, I, oh yeah. All right, well, that's interesting, all right. Chief, what?
Good evening. You'll have my report. Happy to answer any questions on it. Sorry, I'm nursing a sinus infection here, so. I appreciate you listening to my comments on the Racehorse Alley issue. I would like to talk briefly about the bus parking that passed earlier, I think it's a good program, but I need counsel to understand that, and I believe you do, that parking and these buses stopping to load and offload are two different issues. And I would just encourage with that plan to bring it as close to that first block and not into first block as we can for parking, because I think that's going to encourage the buses to use them as opposed to not using them. I mean, I think they'll park in them, don't get me wrong, but I don't think they're going to load and offload in them, and there's no way to force that.
As a police officer, you probably know better than most, right? There's breaking the law, and then there's being rude. And being rude doesn't mean you're breaking the law. And that's what we're going to be dealing with.
Yeah, it's, yeah, the buses can still stop in traffic and load and offload, so like I said, if we can bring them down to that, if there's any way to get it in the first block as opposed to up in that second block further, I don't know. That's my thought, or a loading and unloading zone, or temporary loading and unloading zone, or something in that pilot program to where if, you know, the buses are coming in, they can set aside a few spots for loading and unloading that day, as opposed to parking if they have hours. I'm just brainstorming or spitballing, if you will, but my two cents on it.
Questions for the chief?
Chief, there was no major incidents so past month that you would like to discuss? We had, yeah.
I was going to say, we have the same problems as any town, that's all, child scenario case, I think our detectives are doing a good job with a lot of things.
Exceptional job, and that's playing out, and we're still, actually still investigating that particular case, and to figure out, we think we've got it narrowed down that it actually did happen in a borough, not exactly what has happened yet, detectives actually just had a meeting today with doctors, so, and I've not been briefed on it yet, but that case is progressing, the child is doing much better, and it's almost miraculous, frankly.
But our cadets are in the academy and?
Yes, I wanted to say that too, our cadets are in the academy, they started Wednesday, so they're not too far in, one of them got a partial waiver as I put in the report, so you'll see him here once in a while learning some geography and things that can be worked on without having to be a sworn officer.
So he had credits or how does that work?
What happened was, the one cadet was a police officer for the naval base in Mechanicsburg. And the state makes allowances for experience like that, but they have to take a waiver test and then they, so he got a partial waiver, is all I can say, I mean, he has to do the academic stuff in the police academy, like Pennsylvania law, Pennsylvania criminal procedure, those sorts of things, he doesn't have to do driving CPR, first aid, firearms, those things in the academy. The unfortunate part is, all the things that he has to do are stretched out across most of the whole academy, so we're not going to see him much earlier, a little bit earlier, but not much earlier than we'll see the other individual that has to take the full academy.
But it also allows him time to train locally while otherwise he'd be in school.
Yes, yes, and we had him here, he was here actually Saturday. We used him very briefly at a traffic post, so that's some things he can do, because you don't need to be sworn, so it came in handy. National Night Out, thank you, Mayor. National Night Out, now I say it every time, Tuesday, August 1st, hope everybody can come. Have a band booked, we have some fun things lined up, we're going to do some door prizes, if you will, some raffles, we're trying to do a benefit for SCAP, for a food drive, dry goods drive, you bring that down, you get a ticket to enter into the raffle for gift cards from businesses around town, Upper Crust, a bunch of businesses around town, all the businesses on Steinware, everybody's just been very, very gracious, and trying to make it a real fun and more of a kid-friendly atmosphere, I think, than what's been advertised in years past. So you should start seeing the advertising for that coming out as we solidify things, we still have a couple of things we're trying to do to get in, which I think will be really kid-friendly, and if we can get those in and get it out on the head, I think it'll be good. Tuesday, August 1st, four-thirty date, come down, fire company-
At the rec park.
The fire company is going to do food, sell food as a fundraiser, I think Mr. Harbaugh's actually in charge of that, I could be mistaken.
I'm co-chair of it.
He's co-chair, okay. But, yeah, we're really, really happy about how National Night Out's coming together this year. If I missed anything, I'm sorry, I kind of fogged today.
Understood, no, I think you did okay. Questions?
I just wanted to comment, a thank you again for all of your help and the department's help with Gettysburg Pride, and it was phenomenal, I really appreciate that. We got lots of feedback from the community and from visitors for that fest about having such a nice police presence at that, and the march on the street was incredible. Also, a couple of weeks ago, I was down in the square, visiting with some residents and chatting with some tourists, and three officers on foot, very friendly, just walking through, and some tourists said, "Well, that's really nice." And then the residents were like, "Actually, that's really nice." So I just wanted to say thank you, I like to see them on the bikes, I like to see them out on foot. They were saying hello to everybody, it was just a random evening, and they were just walking down.
That's actually part of the program that I talked about briefly before, this community relations initiative that we're trying to put together to get the policemen out there and talk into people and walk in, and the businesses and the community have been so great with their donations, that those were, probably these two of them were officers on overtime that have been funded by the community. It was awesome, it's awesome, good program, we hope to get it up and going more, I've only had a couple of them so far, but we want the bikes, foot patrol, and then I really want to get the mounted unit involved, because as I've said many times, people just love those horses, so. But thank you for bringing that up and noticing, I appreciate it.
The bear on Baltimore Street raised the national news, I have relatives in other states who saw it on the news and commented.
I think that illustrates my point all the time, that we don't just garner statewide news, we garner national, international news for everything because of Gettysburg.
All right, anything else for the chief today? All right, if not, we go on to the office of the manager and treasurer, Charles and Sarah.
I don't have anything other than what's on the agenda here tonight.
Mr. Gable?
The operating account currently has $2.6 million in it, and to date, the borough has collected 100% of its property tax revenue. The borough's also already transferred its largest expenditure to its debt service fund for the year, so that means we continue to run a sizable surplus for the year of $760,000, that's through June 30th. That's consistent with the borough's policy as it relates to its usage of ARPA funds, and so that explains the $750,000 transfer motion before you tonight. That concludes my report, and unless you have questions, or we can talk about the motions as they come up.
All right, so any questions not related to the motions before we start those, and then we can return as needed? Okay, first, the bills and payrolls.
I'll make a motion to approve all bills and payrolls for the month as presented.
Second. All right, we have motion and second, any questions or comments about the bills or payrolls? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, next, the taxes honorations.
I'll make a motion to accept the J.P. Harris Associates Tax Exoneration Report for tax years 2007 and 2009.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and second, either Mr. Moon or Mr. Lovr, sorry, take your pick. Questions or comments about tax exonerations? These are so old, because we don't do this anymore. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, next, the transfer of the capital reserves.
Make a motion to make a budget modification to transfer the amount of $750,000 from the general fund account number zero-one to the capital reserve fund account number thirty.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, any questions or comments about the transfer? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, the COLA for Walter Gleam.
I'll make a motion to authorize a COLA increase for retired police pensioner Walter Gleam to be paid from the police pension plan effective June 1st, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, next for Mr. Lockman?
I'll make a motion to authorize a COLA increase for retired police pensioner William Lockman to be paid from the police pension plan effective June 1st, 2023.
Second.
Yeah, a motion and a second for Mr. Lockman's pension increase, any questions or comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and the Civil Service Commission?
I'll make a motion to provide notification to the Civil Service Commission of the Borough of Gettysburg to request the commission's certificate of an eligibility list for the position of entry-level patrol officer of the Gettysburg Borough Police Department.
Second.
Okay, point of clarification, this is for-
New list.
Generation of a new list, that's what I thought, the phrasing of that.
Council's already exhausted the last list.
Yeah, the phrasing of how that is worded threw me off a little bit, but yeah, this will be, Sarah, are you going to tell Mr. Sanders?
Yeah, I'll send him a letter.
And it's certification of an eligibility list, not certificate, so just to clarify that as well.
Certification of, I mean, you eligibility.
Right.
Yeah, that's, this is for the, yeah, so this, what has happened is basically, we created a list and immediately utilized the entire thing. So we're going to be in a position to advertise for a longer period of time, and I think, again, I think I said it the other month or two months ago, you know, the mayor and the chief did a great job, and really the whole team did, in getting this out there and working through the process. I'd like to think that we'll have more applicants, but I know, chief and I probably have the same concern as that we probably won't, but-
I have informed both our candidates in the academy that they are ambassadors for getting people to apply to the police department, so, and they have readily both accepted that direction, if you will, and we'll talk to the uncommitted folks that are there and-
So the change is the rules and regs, if you're 21, you know, you can meet the fiscal requirements and the testing and so forth, that's a big change, you can be a cop if you want to. All right, any, yep.
And I hope we're continuing to look for diversity as we try to find ways to recruit new officers to our police department, including women and people of color and Spanish-speaking as well, so, just a reminder.
We did that outreach, and we also worked with the police chief in Chambersburg, who has a wonderful recruiting program to get information, what's the app you used? We put it on, we put it on Cheney University and Lincoln's University's website, so we are making efforts in that direction.
We'll do that again, this time through, that, the name escapes me, that the colleges are using for their recruitment or their career writing and placement.
Yeah, it's a tool they're using, yeah. Yep, all right.
Excellent, thank you, we're making the effort.
Questions or comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anything else for Mr. Gable or Ms. Stoll before we go on to reports?
I just want to say something, and I just want to hats off to our borough manager and to his staff, because while we do have ARPA funds in the coffers that help, I think that, I would be remiss not to mention the fact that we are well-managed fiscally as a borough, and I remember a number of weeks ago when the borough was hit and almost went bankrupt at one point, and we are really well-managed fiscally, and that's not just because we have, you know, ARPA funds that have come in, and I just want to say thank you to our borough manager and to his staff, because they do a really good job, they're very conscientious about that, and that's really important, and a lot of small boroughs throughout the Commonwealth are not as tight as we are, and I really appreciate that as a member of the council.
Yeah, it's nice to not be staring down the Beryl Act 47, that's nice. Very much appreciated, all right, Main Street, Ms. Sellers.
So, good evening, everyone, you have my report, but a few things to highlight real quick, the facade improvement program continues, we've done two rounds, we're looking at a third, so the total award to Main Street Gettysburg is $50,000 with the projects that have been currently awarded in the first two rounds, we're looking at $480,610 of total projects across the historic district, so that's the investment that's being made right now, which is pretty significant, and we have about $13,000 left to award in the third round, so that should mean further investment in downtown facades. The 30th anniversary of the movie Gettysburg is still coming in October, the VIP tickets sold out the first day, so if you missed it, there is still seats available that Friday night and for a different showing on Sunday, but really exciting things happening, and businesses are getting involved, I'm really excited about the economic development and just opportunities to really do collaborative efforts with partners across Gettysburg and beyond. The Grow with Google workshop, really, this was an extraordinary program that happened in June, and we're looking to do another one in the fall, so reaching out to businesses, really getting them involved with a national platform at no expense to them, which is a great opportunity to teach them their online footprint and presence, really looking to create opportunities for local businesses to take advantage of those trainings, like I said, at no charge to them, and really grow into the 21st century and beyond with the tools that are available now to grow a small business on that scale. The HARB meeting on June 21st, so, yes, the Welcome Center project, I am excited about the presentation that we were able and the discussion that followed at that meeting, I know this has not been lightly undertaken over the last several years, we're in a unique position right now, as I've told you before, with the congressional appropriation being considered and lots of local support happening, Mr. Carr is correct, we do have a lot of grant money that has come in, that has been, that remains in restricted accounts waiting for this project to be shovel-ready, so we're getting to that point. To answer your question earlier, it's an 11-foot, or, sorry, 11-inch drop from the front door to the back of the house, so it's pretty significant when you go in there, so, but we're excited, as always, I will keep you posted on that. Quick comment on parking, parking is a, parking problems are a good problem from an economic development standpoint. When we don't have places to park, it means people are downtown doing stuff, they're downtown eating, they're downtown shopping, they're taking in attractions and movies and special events, it's a good problem. If you can find a place to park, it means that we have an economic development problem downtown, it means we have vacant stores and storefronts, it means that our businesses are slow, so the fact that you can't park in front of where you want to go is a blessing in disguise, so be very thankful for what we have downtown if you think we have a parking problem, so. Main Street Gettysburg is honored since 1984 to be the economic arm of the borough. I invite the public, I invite council, and staff does all the time, but to access me as needed, I'm available for questions- I'm available for questions and discussion. I'm happy to talk about anything. It's either on the agenda, off the agenda, on the horizon. There's a lot going on right now. A lot of economic development, a lot of activities, a lot of things planned, and I just think it's an extraordinary time for things to be happening downtown, and there's so many positive possibilities that are on the horizon. So I appreciate your efforts, and I am so glad for the people that get involved, both from volunteer standpoint, from a public servant standpoint, from an investment standpoint, and it just makes the possibility for where we live, work, and play to be the place that it is. So, if you have any questions, that's what I have tonight.
Any questions for Ms. Sellers?
Thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Thank you, good evening.
The Recreation Authority, Mr. Carr.
I just have a little something of, the rec park is doing music in the park at the amphitheater on Sundays at 6:00 PM all summer through August 20th. So similar to the music that's on the parklet and the Lincoln Square, this is out at the rec park on Sunday nights, 6:00 PM, and it is brought to you by the Adams County Arts Council's Star Grant Program and Gettysburg Connection. They wanted me to make sure I plugged that, and that's all I have for rec park right now.
Okay. The Municipal Authority, Mr. Berger.
GMA, at our June meeting on Hurst Ridge, we talked about some different concepts. Since Cumberland Township did not go with the water tank, we discussed adding another booster station via backup to provide flexibility for maintenance. Also, we talked about installing additional water mains to connect our existing booster station off the Fair Play Road. Cemetery Hill bids for the pipe work is due this week. Pipe work's gonna be done while the tour center's being completed, and the office building on 424 Middle Streets moving forward, the lowest bidders were given intent to award, and Mr. Dice says we hope to see action by September.
Okay. The bid, Mrs. Butterfield.
Yes, bid, well, not meet in July, but anecdotal stories about the last two weekends. When I went down there, particularly on Bike Week, Steinware was jumping, and the closing of Culp to allow all those bikes, it was really an extraordinary sight, and so I will, next time, have more of a report on how the merchants on Steinware felt those two weekends did for them.
Okay. The Burrs Association, Mary Ford.
Nothing to report.
Back to Mrs. Butterfield for the COG.
Yes, the program last month was provided by a representative from the planning department of the county and also Sarah Kip of Land Conservancy, and they spoke on the county's various programs for pushing preservation and land conservancy. The Collaboration Subcommittee continues to work on the survey and ever-ending project, it seems, on cybersecurity for municipalities, and right now they're in the editing, rewriting, simplifying phase of that exercise.
Okay, Happy, Ms. Lawson.
Yes, Happy learned that the Adams County Community Foundation has agreed to grant Happy $15,000 towards development of the Gettysburg inner loop if Happy can match that amount from new donors and past donors who haven't given for a few years. So I know Happy has had some success with this, but they are still short of their goal, and the deadline is July 14th, just four days from now. So anyone in the audience, or my colleagues on council, or anybody watching through the community media who is interested in helping Happy with this match grant from the Community Foundation, Happy is hoping that people will go to their website, H-A-D-P-I, which is a secure website to either make a donation or pledge, and the pledge can be made through an email, and that's on the website as well. They meet tomorrow evening for their July monthly meeting.
Okay. ACT PO, Ms. Butterfield.
ACT PO will meet on the 26th.
Overdose awareness, Mr. Moon.
I was unable to attend last month's meeting. We do have another meeting coming up in two weeks, and also we will be at National Night Out, so if you are looking to acquire Narcan, come see us at National Night Out.
Very good. Trail feasibility, Mr. Berger. Recycling, Mrs. Butterfield.
Yes, you all probably read in The Times, there is a county program being instigated to recycle glass, particularly for the neighboring municipalities who do not have that in their trash hauling contract. That initiative is being headed by Cynthia Salisbury. I spoke with County Commissioner Marty Qualley the other day to get an update on where that stands. The center will be at the Emergency Services Building, and Commissioner Qualley pointed out the, they're seeking money for the fence that the state requires be of a certain type and strength. Once the fence goes in, then everything can get rolling. He's estimating in very few months that program will commence, and there will be lots of publicity on it before that. It appears that if Gettysburg residents want to participate, that they are going to be allowed to, but that isn't in concrete yet. Next week, I'll be at the Professional Recyclers Conference, and a couple of staff people are going as well. Karen and Cara will be there with me, and we'll learn how to be more professional recyclers.
Okay.
I misspoke. Deborah and Karen will be with me.
If Gettysburg residents participate in the county program, doesn't that take weight away from us and our money?
Yes, and that's why it's not in concrete yet. It's still being negotiated and discussed.
Interesting. All right, elected officials' comments, Madam Mayor.
Yes, I was very happy to be part of Pride Fest this year. Thank you, Chad. It was a great event. Also, we had Juneteenth celebrations, that's why I wasn't at the ACFA meeting on Juneteenth. We, I went down to the Brethren Home in Korolskis and gave a speech there and spoke at our local Juneteenth celebration. Also, this past weekend, I was invited out to the college to give an opening memorial for Braver Angels. Braver Angels is a national group, they had their national convention here. Six hundred and fifty people came in, and what they do is they want to mend the political divide in our country, and it was just a very interesting group, so I gave an opening memorial welcoming them to Gettysburg, and I also served on a panel talking about how to relate to local politicians. And I will be away next week to the Pennsylvania State Mayor's Conference, and it's gonna be in Lancaster.
Other elected officials' comments?
Yeah, just a couple of quick things. Wanted to give a shout-out and thank you to Randy Hefflin and Public Works, forty-two years with the borough, and also Sarah, our borough manager, Sarah Stoll, thirty-four years. Noting on that, I'm a big fan of what some people call succession planning, and I prefer transition planning. When you have people like that with a wealth of knowledge of the borough, I'm looking directly at you, sir, we've got to start thinking about that. Transition plan, what do we do when we lose this wealth of knowledge with the borough and specifically staff members like Sarah? We've really gotta start thinking about that, and I think that the staff is, and I appreciate that from management, because it's, any industry you're in, it's very important to have a transition plan. So, I thank you for your work, and I hope that all of the knowledge that you have, you'll continue to share with us.
Be a consultant, for sale.
Be a consultant.
Mr. Lawler.
Two things. Where, do the cameras still work on the square? Are they connected, disconnected?
No, I'll have to find out.
Because that definitely would affect, now, I understand it, because people in the know, after I retired, were people who should've been in the know, weren't in the know, didn't understand how they worked, and therefore turned them off. Now, they are designed to monitor the square, and when it's square gridlocks, it opens a light, Baltimore Street going south, York Street going east, Chambersburg going west, but it doesn't open the opposite direction, and that's where the confusion came in. People, well, there was an accident at Baltimore Street and Middle Street, and the police department blamed the traffic signal. Signal worked properly, the guy behind the wheel didn't. Light turned green to go south, which was designed to do, and the guy in the northbound lane saw that the traffic was going south, so he thought the light malfunctioned and went the red light. But if the cameras are working, it solves gridlock, that's why the traffic light was put in at Water Street, because before we had a light at Water and Carlisle, we only controlled three legs of the square. And for the camera system to work, gotta control all four. So, we need to look into that, because that would help solve some of our problems with gridlock in the square. And the other thing is, the pole that has been chopped off and abandoned for a year across from my house is now leaning about three feet at the top toward the neighbor's house. So where are we with MedEd poles? That are there, and a phone company refuses to transfer... I mean, I think it's time that we try to look at, see if we can find them. I mean, we can't do much on the poles that are on the state right-ofways, but these are on our right-ofways.
So this is just the back streets.
Yeah, Ridge Avenue is our street, our right-ofway, and there's a hell of a lot of other ones that are on our streets and our right-ofways. Yeah, High Street's another example. So, it's time to do something. Obviously, we've tried being nice and talking, that has worked zero, and I understand MedEd's frustration with the phone company, but they still own the pole. So we need to look at an ordinance where we can find these people or do something to control our right-ofways. Ninety days is more than enough for them to make transfers off these poles. I know what Robbie's going through, I went through it. You have to have some conversations where you don't use very big words to get your point across. Sometimes you have to threaten to take a chainsaw out and drop the pole. But the bottom line is, these poles are not safe, and that's why MedEd replaced them. MedEd doesn't go out and just replace a new pole because they think it looks pretty. They only replace poles that are dangerous. And now here, this pole's been replaced over a year, now it's starting to lean, and everybody just goes, "Oh, well." Now, the man who owns this property's ninety-four years old, he's got enough issues to worry about without worrying about the damn telephone pole falling on his house, and I agree with him.
Is that...
It's time to get off the pot.
Is that something that can be addressed through the fee schedule? Can we assign fees that way?
It's like, what are our options here?
I don't think our options are great, and that's the problem.
No, they're not.
That's the problem.
So we can't really find them or anything?
The problem is, is that we essentially have no contractual relationship, so we don't have any real leverage, if you will. I mean, it really depends on MedEd to follow through on...
So they don't wanna drop the pole because there's third-party equipment on it?
Exactly.
And they don't wanna cut the third-party equipment?
Right.
What happens if we cut the third-party equipment?
That's an interesting question. I went through that with a bridge replacement down behind Carlisle Street.
But if it breaks when it falls, then it's just an accident.
If the pole falls, then they gotta come out and fix it regardless of the time of day.
Right.
But the way this pole's leaning, it's gonna be an ugly fall if it falls.
We had one, he's out of town one time, with a storm came through, and it's, when the utility's working, everybody's happy about the pole, and when something's wrong with the pole, and you try to figure out who owns it, they're not so receptive.
Well, I know MedEd is frustrated with the phone company, probably more so than I am, because in talking to some of those guys, you know, they have poles all over South Central Pennsylvania, it's not just Gettysburg. I don't know if a letter to the PUC to push would help, but this needs addressed. It's not fair to our taxpayers, you know, it just, it's a dangerous situation. We always talk about public safety. Nobody gives a damn if the pole rots off and falls over.
Let's at least get a letter to the PUC drafted.
Although we've basically have been told that they don't have any authority over the matter, so.
How's that?
I'd say we draft it anyway.
And send it to just Dear PUC.
Well, CC, the state representative, the state senator.
Yeah.
MedEd. Governor, whoever you wanna send it to, but the more, the better, because if nothing else demonstrates that we had a knowledge, it was very obvious that this was gonna happen, because it probably is a matter of time, if there is many out there, it may not be here, but there's gotta be one falling over somewhere.
Well...
If this is so common around the state.
This pole's at the end of the street, and when they put the new pole in, they attach a new guideline to the new pole, but they disconnect the old guideline because that pole's supposed to come out.
So there's nothing stopping it from...
There's nothing, there's nothing holding it back, so when you have a windstorm going through, along with a little bit of saturation from the rain, pole starts to move. That's exactly what this one's done. Because there's no other wires, there is no next pole, in this case, to keep it burning.
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing there anymore.
This is the end pole.
And God forbid it were to fall on somebody's house, is that then gonna be the responsibility of the borough or MedEd?
No, that's gonna be MedEd.
I, the letter, I think that, see, luckily, this is like the scenario you don't wanna think about, right? But it's, but you're absolutely correct, right? If nothing else, that letter, if it doesn't actually accomplish much with the PUC or MedEd or anyone else, at least it says like, hey, we were telling you that this is something that needed to be done, and you didn't do it. Because, you know, they're not gonna move somebody else's equipment, and, I know I'd be a little dramatic there, we're not gonna cut it either, but it's tempting.
It's rare for MedEd to move phone lines because then they have issues with the phone company.
Yep, when the phone line doesn't work, then it's their fault.
Right.
Yep, just like everybody else, looking to blame somebody else.
And all these poles, cable used to be an issue too, but cable's been pretty good the last year. What I've seen around town, MedEd puts a new pole in, cable operator is usually there within a week or two to move their stuff over. If you go and look at the poles that are cut off around town, ninety percent of them only have one set of wires on them, and they belong to the telephone company, which keeps being sold and changed, you know, now we're down to Bright Star, we've been through everybody else, I guess.
Yeah, the names change often.
Yeah, even though it's the same people. I don't know, maybe we have to send it to MedEd first and copy everybody else, but I think he's right. We send to the representative, we send to the state senators, you know, they gotta have committees that deal with utilities. And I'm sure...
I wonder how that falls, because like, Maestriano Chairs has asked her mercy for parents, I think.
Well, and I'm sure PennDOT's just as frustrated as I am. Because they got a pole on West Middle Street that's leaning out over Middle Street that their side plows have hit just going out the road, because it leans over the curb line. Right by Gettysburg, or Adams County National Bank? But it's way overdue. There's poles that have been abandoned, not abandoned, but changed out for over three years in this town, and in case of the one on West Middle Street by Ridge Avenue at ACMB, that's ten years now. That pole was changed out, and MedEd set it back off the right-ofway when West Middle Street was redone for the 150th anniversary. And the old pole is still there today, and now we're at the 160th anniversary. That's over ten years. The phone company's gotta be out of excuses by now. The phone company's gotta be out of excuses by now. I mean, in 10 years, they didn't have time to transfer those wires? Come on, give me a break.
So we'll draft that letter.
Okay.
Select officials' comments. Ms. Lawson, any comments this evening? Patty, any comments?
No.
Okay. I would note that the Gettysburg Station site plan is now making the local paper and so forth and other outlets. As it's starting to go through the process, it's been to a HARB meeting, representatives have been to a zoning hearing, that zoning hearing will be continued. And I would just comment on that, that when we went through that process, the process of dealing with what was then called the Ready Site and became called the Gettysburg Station Site, the most recent process related to legislation for that occurred from 2016 to 2018. If you want a good summation of how that all went and why we got to the point we did, it's on the Borough website, there is a video of a town hall that occurred June 7th, 2018, which explains, it's on YouTube, but it's on, linked off the Borough website under the council's page there, and it explains all the things that occurred over all the years and how that wasn't built and how we reached the conclusion to approach parking, the zoning, and LERTA as all items that we were dealing with there. I was part of the group that, you know, were proponents of that, that were on the council at that time and changes that we made. There were folks that opposed that, they generally fell into two camps, there were people that opposed it based on principle, based on their beliefs and things that they felt should or should not happen, then there were people that opposed it based on their own personal financial implications or the implications of friends of theirs that would have liked to have purchased the property or perceived they might see some sort of negative outcome if that property was built. And that was pretty much how that occurred. I'd have to say that in the recent sessions I've seen, the HARB meeting was recorded and I read the Planning Commission's report, we have some people involved that are very professional, I know that Mr. Schaefer, who chairs our HARB, was very opposed to the increase in height, but handled it very professionally and I think his comments and how he handled the HARB meeting reflect that just the other night, even though this is, you know, five years later now. And likewise, I'd say in the Planning Commission's report related to their recommendation to the zoning hearing board, I felt that they were very professional because I know that of note, Ms. Kip and Mr. Strauss in particular, really opposed what we did there, Mr. Strauss was on that council for a period of time. But like many other things, sometimes you don't have a unanimous council. And it was very clear early that that would be the outcome with that circumstance. But those parameters have been set and legislated, so just understand that when that was done, I did not know Timothy Harrison, no one did that was involved, Mr. Harrison took an optional in that property midstream in that process as he was observing things occurring that were reported in the newspaper and other places, and then eventually did purchase it. But this was not set up and designed for any single builder to develop that property, it was set up and designed to get that property built because there were problems with that property that made it difficult to build. And I would like to say that what Mr. Harrison has presented, he did meet with many of us here at the borough and what he has presented is well within the parameters that we set at that time, Ms. Marshall was working for the county at that time, was very helpful in trying to, you know, demonstrate to the public what things could look like and how a building could fit and what it would mean and not, and we looked at different options and what he is proposing fits within those options. So just to, you know, I've read things, people imply that, you know, this is like the appropriate moment to kind of review policy decisions and legislate again. You set up and we created a set of circumstances to allow someone to operate within and they will operate within those, and that's what they're doing. Many people even involved in the borough at the time thought that, "Oh, we need to be involved and talk with this developer and whoever it's gonna be and see what they need," and I never had that opinion, I felt that it was very important that as a government, you set the parameters that you're comfortable with and then you allow the free market to do what it's gonna do and you let it work. You know, I think a lot of us would have liked it to be more commercial, that was how the LERTA was set up, they will not, in the current plans, actually utilize the LERTA because of the nature of the construction, but I think that's just a result of pandemic. If you look back, they had plans presented in 2019, you know, that went to the paper and so forth and it was gonna be a hotel and so forth and things have changed. So, I just caution the public, be careful what you read, you know, not everyone that writes is well-informed, and I hate to say it, but some people that write are downright malicious. So, with that, I send it to public comment. Use the podium, please, you have five minutes.
Just because it's on the computer doesn't make it true.
Good morning, good afternoon, feels like morning to me, I've been up since five. I'm Shelley Naus, 28 Chambersburg Street, I have a business there, I'm a resident and I'm also a taxpayer. I appreciate the information that you just gave me because that is what I would like to speak about tonight, is this project. I will say that I don't know the history of it, so I wrote that down because I've been spending, since I found out about this project at the Borough Council meeting on the 12th, a lot of time trying to investigate exactly what it is, I've talked to engineers, I've talked to people in the construction industry, and what I really am struggling with is that this application, even though you in council and staff may have seen the behind-the-scenes stuff, the public didn't even know that this was an application until June 12th. And since that time, it's already progressed through planning, through HARB and zoning and I know that there's probably residents out there that are neighbors that got a letter and may have been on vacation and didn't even get to attend the zoning board hearing. Myself, I was out of town during the zoning board hearing, so I was not able to make any comment, not even sure if I could have made any comments or asked any questions at that meeting. So for a person of the public, I think that this is a very huge project that's being undertaken. I know the property has been undeveloped for many years, my ex-husband and I actually looked at purchasing that property 15, 20 years ago, Harry Eastman may know that. It's something that I think is gonna change the scope of this downtown area forever and so I just, I think there's a lot of unanswered questions for the public. And I see that you have this town hall meeting, I would watch that, I would also, you know, somewhat plead with the council to consider tabling the zoning board hearing, even if it's just another month to allow the public to catch up to speed with what's going on. I walked the property this morning, I couldn't find the sign that posted that the zoning hearing board was going to be on June 28th. I asked a friend about it, did they see it, I'm like, I walked the whole thing, he goes, "Yeah, it's laying down in the grass." And it was a sign, you know, that's like an eight-by-10 laminated piece of paper on a stake. I was looking for like a billboard, like zoning hearing this date, like you see in a city when you're gonna put something as big as seven stories up in our downtown community. I have lots of questions about the infrastructure, which I'm not gonna get into here, but I would really love to see if there could be some sort of town hall meeting just to, you know, put this out there to the residents and say, "This is what we're proposing." If this is a wonderful project that's coming to our town, there should be a lot of transparency about it and what it is. I just came upon the knowledge, does everybody know that there's lots of grant money that was given to this project? That was not stated anywhere, it's on the Pennsylvania website, $6.8 million that the developer has received to construct this site. I know that was a question asked at the zoning hearing board, this is just information I'm finding from other people in the community. Sarah knows, I have requested the transcripts for the hearing that I wasn't able to attend, they're not ready yet, of course, I probably won't get them before the Wednesday meeting. I just think as residents of this community, that you're going to be set up for a lot of frustration if they didn't get to see or hear about this project, which was application June 1st, Borough Council meeting June 12th, letters to the neighbors June 22nd, zoning board meeting June 28th. What if you were on vacation? Like, you would have come home to, "Oh, the zoning board hearing was already gone and I didn't get to speak at it or even know that this was happening." I just think that, you know, I really, really implore you to slow this process down, even if it's just one more month. Would it be that hard to do with a project of this magnitude coming to our area? You spoke tonight about the traffic with the Franklin funnel and all the traffic lights, you know, this proposed 186 apartments, we're talking about possibly 300, 400 residents, at least 200, 300 cars, where are they coming out in the morning to go to work? Are we gonna have to put red lights, you know, in that area? Has there been any traffic studies done? Can the, you know, our electric load handle this sort of things? There's talk about like, electric charging stations there, I've talked to some engineers, there's several other projects going on in this neighborhood in Cumberland and Strabane Township, 700 potential more townhomes and apartments in this area. So I'm just like, I'm sure that the planning is seeing all of this, but us as residents aren't aware of all of this and it just would, to be more transparent with us so that we know what's going on, I think is really important with this project. So, I hope you will consider that and thank you all for your time tonight.
Would you like me to address some of the issues that really aren't councils?
There are some that pop up, you should probably talk about the timeline and legal requirements.
Unfortunately, the Borough Council has absolutely no control over the timelines. The timelines are set forth under the municipality's planning code and there's a certain period of time within which the developer, when they make an application, a hearing has to be conducted. And therein is, and candidly, those timelines are in there so that a government body can't slow someone down or essentially stall a project, so.
In many circumstances, if you don't act appropriately, they just are considered approved.
It would be a deemed approval and so forth. Now,
Automatically.
It's not within the province of the council, once, I mean, the council does appoint the members of the zoning hearing board, but that is one of the areas of the law too where the connections between the borough, I mean, a person who serves on the zoning hearing board really can't have any other connection with the borough. So, we don't dictate that, the law dictates the timeframes and so forth. There are situations where a developer can agree in writing to an extension, but they have to agree to it or you're facing a deemed approval of the application that they have made, so there's, appreciate what you said, the problem is, is that this Borough Council really has no control and the law is designed so the Borough Council doesn't have any control over the process. The council has spoken in terms of land use and that's what it does when it enacts a zoning ordinance or enacts its subdivision and land development ordinance, but that's kind of where it ends for us in terms of control, it's more of a legislative process, if you will, so. Yeah.
How about comment, sir?
Good evening, I'm John Burnt, I'm a new returning resident to Gettysburg. I came back to town to do some work almost 90 days ago for Upper Crust and I left two years ago from the Gettysburg Hotel. I just wanted to make one more comment about the bus loading and unloading, based on Jill's comments about how Main Street Gettysburg and we are all blessed about the new bus traffic to downtown and Officer Glennie's comments about we should move it closer to the actual square. I think a lot of the new traffic of the buses has been generated by Upper Crust and that would certainly be a lot closer to the square and I think that the pilot test program, you should consider spaces closer to the square, closer to the Upper Crust, which is generating that bus traffic in doing that, so that the safety would be, I think, better addressed than a block or two away. Seems to me fairly simple to include that, at least on New York Street parking spaces. Thank you.
Okay. Public comment?
Can I say something?
You may.
So Jill Sellers, Main Street, Gettysburg. So economic development, we're talking, of course, about the Gettysburg Station project. Investment in downtown is incredible. This project has been not developed for decades, this is a tremendous opportunity. I'm really encouraged by the fact that this level of investment is gonna encourage other business. I know there's a fear of competition, but in a free market society, that's the way this works and it's actually good for us. More restaurants, more retail and more residents is a really important factor in how we can function as a small town. If anybody doesn't think that there's a housing problem in Adams County, you're sorely mistaken at every economic level, whether you are the working poor or you are a newly recruited professional moving to Adams County, housing is a major, major problem here. So the fact that we may get, you know, a couple hundred apartments and, you know, 200 people or so moving downtown, they're managing the parking issues there, they're providing green space and this is a huge opportunity to enrich our downtown, create another opportunity for a walkable and available district adjacent to our historic district. This is an incredible opportunity for investment and looking towards the future of how we're gonna sustain what we love about Gettysburg. So I highly encourage people to look for more information about this project. Again, I invite you to come and talk to me about economic development and how that works. I'm happy to talk about it till the cows come home, because I think it really shows. And Gettysburg is unique in its economic development, we have been, this was a thriving place before the battle and it has adapted itself at every turn ever since, including coming out of a pandemic. So we will certainly survive the development of the Gettysburg Station as well. So, again, I'm available to you at any time, that includes the public, you can reach me at my office and 717-337-3491, reach out via email, I'm happy to chat with anybody about this subject or any other concerning the development of downtown Gettysburg. Thank you, good night.
Okay. Public comment? Seeing no additional, we will adjourn to executive session.